Okay, everyone, we're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. And welcome to our March special budget meeting. And I'm going to ask Ms. Anaya to read the Open Public Meetings Act statement, please.
On Thursday, January 14, 2021, notice of this meeting was mailed to the press and the current of Egg Harbor Township. Notice was also delivered that day to the Egg Harbor Township clerk and posted on the bulletin board in Township Hall. Advertised instructions for this hybrid meeting were posted on our website and on social media on Friday, February 20th, excuse me, 26th, 2021.
May we have roll call, please?
Ms. Alabarda?
Here.
Mrs. Byrd?
Here.
Mr. Delabarka?
Here.
Mr. Ireland?
Here.
Mr. Price?
Mr. Price is here.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Here.
Mrs. Solagi?
Here.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Here.
And Mr. Castellano?
Here.
Okay, if you can all please join me and we'll salute the flag.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America. Thank you Republic, for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone, to our March budget meeting, our first meeting in March, but actually our second full budget meeting. Hard to believe we're in that far already. I have just a couple of quick comments budget-related before I turn it over. First thing that I just want to bring to everyone's attention is our state aid situation. We're very happy to be receiving an increase in state aid of just about $10 million over last year. So how did that come about? Well, last year, as you recall, we were supposed to receive six in additional, and then it would have been six again this year in additional. But last year, four of that six was taken back because of COVID and the second budget that the state had to implement. So this year, not only did we receive an increase of six, but we received the four back that we lost last year. Six and four is 10. So we're very, very, very happy about that. Now, that aid didn't get here by accident. It got here through a lot of hard work. It got here through aggressive and sustained lobbying over many years by this district. We wrote letters. We attended countless meetings with more than one governor, commissioners of education, legislators, officials of all kinds. We testified many, many times before the legislature. And that helped lead to the passage of what's known as S-2. That's a 2018 statute that seeks to bring districts like Egg Harbor Township that had been traditionally underfunded under the School Funding Reform Act back up to full funding over a period of five school years or six calendar years. That law passed in 2018, and so that's what accounts for our continuing increase in state aid. Now, even though we're very happy about this increase, I do have to point out that we're still over $17 million below the full formula amount. And in addition, we're still paying the EDA assessment, which we've tried so hard to get rid of. There's a whole story on that, and I won't go into it. But really, the thing to remember is we still have work to do. Very happy about this additional aid, but there is still work to do to get us to full funding. It's been a team effort all along, and I'm very thankful, especially to Mrs. Byrd, over these past three years for helping me with all the day-to-day. You know, driving to Trenton at 8:30 on a Saturday morning, that's kind of tough. Of course, those meetings have been virtual these days, but we still have them. We have one Saturday morning. And that's how this stuff gets done, again, sustained work. So one other thing I just want to mention before we get into it is we just heard yesterday, and we're all very happy, that the governor announced that school district employees would be eligible for vaccines as of March 15th. That's very good news. Of course, we need more detail on that because being eligible is a whole lot different from actually getting a vaccine. But still, good news, positive, and that came about through the efforts of many, many districts across the state, many of the education organizations, many elected officials at all levels. So it was really a team effort statewide, but I'm very proud that, you know, we did our part here in Egg Harbor Township to contribute to it. So with that, I'm turning over the microphone first to Dr. Gruccio, and then we'll get into our budget discussion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Castellano. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our 2122 budget meeting. This evening is dedicated to budget. In just a few minutes, Ms. Anaya is going to share her compilation of many months of fiscal work, work that began in mid-fall and included the needs of running a comprehensive PK to 12 school district. Areas included our facilities, transportation, food services, technology, security, and academics. As an administrative team, we worked diligently to meet our district learning goals, in particular, improving student achievement. COVID-19 has had an impact on student achievement nationwide, statewide, as well as here in our school district. We shared data to show the need for additional interventions beyond what we are currently doing each and every day. This budget includes those resources and more. I want to thank our supervisors, directors, principals, and central office staff and administrators who are a part of building this budget. The Board of Education, I thank you for listening to budget presentations over the last few months. Everyone's insight assisted us in meeting the needs of our students. I also want to say that we are grateful for the governor and him recognizing the importance of funding schools. Especially want to thank our business administrator, Ms. Chandra Anaya, for taking all the requests and spending many, many hours reviewing line items, assessing funding sources, and preparing a balanced budget for 2122. I feel very fortunate to have her as our business administrator. Her financial insight and skills are impeccable. I want you to know that we appreciate your work, Ms. Anaya, and the work that you put into this presentation. So without further ado, I'd like Ms. Anaya to present to you the 2122 Egg Harbor Township budget proposal.
Oh, the entire window? Okay. I'm going to hang out here. It's my spot. Thank you very much, Dr. Gruccio, for that introduction. Thank you, board members, for taking the time to meet with us today on a special meeting. Thank you for the community who showed up because this is probably the most important job for our Board of Education, is to help us close the gap with student achievement, learning goals, all the fun stuff that we talk about all the time. So this is a very important time, very exciting time. So I want to kind of just, before I even start the slideshow, give a little bit of an outline of how today is going to go. I'm going to first give an overview of money in, an overview of money out, and all the buckets of money and all the buckets that they go in and out of. And it's going to go slow, and after we conclude a section, I will open up and have more of an interact, interaction with our board. Are there any questions at this area? If we can understand every silo, it won't be so crazy to look at this huge budget. So that's how we're going to roll it, definitely ask questions along the way. This is our plan. We have a lot of work to do still in the next few weeks to get more refined. This is our first draft. We got state aid on Thursday. It is Tuesday. So although we had budget meetings prior to that to help understand the needs, making it all happen, this is our first round, so please be patient on that if you find, you know, questions or concerns there. Once we go through the buckets and understanding each separate compartment, we will then give you the binders. The binders are coming out tonight. When we get the binders, we will do binder orientation. We will walk you through what's in it so that when you take it home, you can then go through it and understand what you're actually looking at. Okay? Good? Are we ready? All right. Here we go. I clicked a lot of links in here, so I'm really hoping they all work because it's fun. Okay, while we're here, our board goals, the board's goals are listed here. I will not read them verbatim. You guys are very familiar. You guys have been talking about them, working on them for the past few years. So with these goals in mind, with the district learning goals in mind that we discuss frequently in all of our presentations, and along with all of these different updates you've gotten along the way from the different areas, we have compiled a balanced budget. So here we go. We are a school district. We are a government entity. Government accounting allows you, or actually makes you, keep things in their specific buckets. Fund 10, or as the general fund we talk about frequently, is the most talked about in this boardroom in this district. That's how we operate our schools, daily operations. Fund 20, think of that as like special operations, things that are unique, reserved, specific purposes. That's where grants flow through, and as of next year, where student activities are going to start flowing through. They've always been a separate thing. They've always been a bucket 70, which we never talked about. They are now going to be into 20. That is specific special revenue, unique for certain purposes. Fund 30. Fund 30 is where you have local funds raised and state funds raised for capital improvements, and that's where projects are held, not capital reserve projects that we do day-to-day. If we do a new lighting project or something simple, this is capital, like huge improvements, renovations. Fund 40 is how you fund the things that are in Fund 30. It's debt service. We take out loans, huge loans, bonds, actually, and the state matches them, and we have to pay the money back. So example, we built Miller School. That was Fund 30. That's how we bought things, but the money flows through Fund 40, debt service. A little bit more about our buckets. We've used this slide in the past as well. As I said, Fund 10, operating budget, this is where our local levy is, where our state aid is, federal and local revenue, such as our semi and our, when we charge for use of facilities, this is where it'll go. When we used to charge, used to charge for preschool, that's where it would go. Fund 20, federal grants, state grants, supplemental, things that are supplemental to our general fund. And I highlighted the rest. Fund 60 is fun on the side. That's things that have to be self-funded. They're a business entity, self-funded. It's not for tonight's discussion, but there is that out there as well. Questions on the funds and the buckets? I think we're good. Okay. More words. And you guys, the slideshow will be available to you guys as well, so you can go back and say, what is that again? This particular budget is going to have local revenue, which is our general fund and our debt service fund, local levy, taxes raised to pay for our operations, as well as prior bonds. State aid, that is to help our general fund, our daily operations. State aid now has preschool, preschool expansion money, which is our special revenue. It's a purpose for state aid. They say you have to spend it on preschool. State aid also helps fund those loans we took out of the bonds to help us build capital improvements. Federal aid in this particular budget is going to flow through and impact our general budget and the special purpose budget, specifically the COVID relief funds, the ESAR funds that are out. A lot of the relief we've gotten from the federal government are flowing through to help us with our general budget as well as our special budget. Local revenues, rentals, we turned it down a little bit because nobody's really renting our facilities, can't expect that kind of revenue, not sure what it's going to look like post-COVID. SRX, solar revenue credits. We sell, we own our own solar, and we sell those credits, usually generates about $300,000 or more a year, so we also budget for that. Interest. Interest is now a thing. For a while there, we couldn't even budget interest because the banks were giving us maybe $2,000 or $3,000. We are now getting back into the $100,000 to plus, so we're budgeting for that. Student activities are going to hit our general fund and our special revenue fund. Student activity funds, and I'm going to highlight this briefly, was a, Miller School was having a fundraiser for t-shirts so they can have Ice Cream Day, something simple. They raised enough money, they had Ice Cream Day, and they have enough Ice Cream Day money for the next year, every day, because they raised so much funds, the parents were overflowing with their giving. That stays in a student activity fund and can only be used for students. It can't be used to hire a coach or any kind of advisor. It's specifically to help students. That is also going to, now we have this in our regular budget to talk about, which we never did before. You're going to see more about that, and we'll spend some time on that, but maybe not tonight. Excess surplus is another revenue source we have. Simple put, savings from prior years, savings from money not spent. Keep that simple. Okay, we good so far? I promise I'm not going to try to bore you. I just need to go slow and thorough because it's going to be a lot. Okay. Here is, I don't know if you can see that, or we will talk about it, though. You're going to get all of this. Nothing I'm showing you, you're not going to see in your binder or in this PowerPoint. I just want to kind of go over it. So in this particular slide, we have our sources of revenue by dollar amounts, as well as the changes. As Mr. Castellano stated, $9.9 million additional state aid. Fantastic. SEMI is a federal program that helps us provide services to eligible students. Every year, they tell us what to budget based on the students they know we have here that qualify for services. Can't really change it, but it did go up a little bit. That's exciting. Revenue, we talked about facilities rentals, did decrease at about $30,000 because I don't see it really happening much next year. Maybe it will, and we'll be surprised pleasantly, but we budget conservatively. Preschool tuition is a goner. Can't charge anymore. We have a free preschool program. And then we have other LEA tuition. This is students who are transient, whether it's due to homelessness or DCPMP placements. We generate revenue from other schools sending their kids to our school, and we also have expense lines of us paying other schools for our transient students. So it has to show a revenue line and an expense line. Increase that just a little bit because if you looked at prior audits, which I know you guys have been studying, you'll see tuition over the years has been significantly higher than what we've been budgeting, so I did increase that. We didn't, we did increase that. And again, we talked about our solar, so there's that. That's local funds. Fund balance. Let's talk here for a minute. Fund balance is money not spent. Remember the savings. If we were a for-profit entity, this would be like, hey, let's all go on a cruise. It all has to go back into the district, back into education. Last year, we put $3 million of savings towards the budget. The difference this year, as you saw to present, a presentation a few weeks ago said, it's about $5.6 million that we didn't spend in 2021. This year, because of all the federal funding that has been flowing through, we anticipate, and I'm going to break down into this further later, we anticipate not spending $3.5 million this year, conservatively. Emergency reserve was set up in June. We didn't know what was happening with COVID. We didn't know what our budget was going to look like this year. We put away $1 million and said, hey, just for emergencies. Chapter 44, which we will talk about soon, is a health insurance change that was mandated and implemented January 1. If you were negatively impacted by said change at Egg Harbor Township School District, you can use your emergency reserve money and take it out. So we are doing that. Fund balance, savings from prior years. This is basically school money. That's just going back into schools. Different pot, different bucket. That's the whole theme tonight. Everything has its own bucket. Any questions on this page? I'll pause. Changes to the budget, $9.9 million in state aid, $7 million because you go from $3 million to $10 million on applied savings, $17 million budget difference from last year. How could we possibly figure out what to do with that kind of money, right? You'll see. You'll see. All right. Buckets of money. Did I go too fast? I did go too fast. That was Fund 10. That was our general operating budget. Remember the bucket? 10, general, every day. Fund 20, this is special revenue for special purposes and must be used for that reason. Fund 20 this year in our budget, you're going to talk about in the future, after we absorb every slide, we're going to get there. Preschool expansion money, $3.8 million additional money, for specifically preschool expansion free for taxpayers, for our community. SR2 funding was released, maybe not even a month ago, specifically for, they have 12 reasons, 12 ways you can spend this money, and we're going to go into how we're recommending administratively to spend said money, but that's $4.2 million. The state also allocated money for learning loss and mental health, about $270,000 or so. In addition to that, we applied for a grant for learning loss. That total of $473,000 is our application, hoping we're getting it, if anybody's watching, and the entitlement together for those purposes. Again, special revenue Fund 20 for purpose. Security grant, 2018 referendum by the state, the state did this, said we're going to put money into schools for security, and they gave us an allocation of $413,000. We've gone through, I think, seven of the eight hoops at this point, just waiting for whatever's coming next to be able to get this money. $413,000, we anticipate coming sometime this year. Then we have annual entitlement funds. This is things that we get year over year for specific purposes. IDEA, specific to special ed. Must improve your special ed program. You must get the closer to general, get special ed students closer to general education population. That's the specific purpose. ESSA, used to be called NCLB, used to be called all kinds of other, Title I, Title II, all those, specific for remediation, interventions, professional development. Perkins Grant. Perkins is vocational high school. Those who choose to not go to college should have a vocation or some kind of training that helps us in our high school programs. ASPIRE is the afternoon enrichment program held at Miller. Fund 20, specific purpose, can't take any of this and hire a teacher for first grade unless it meets any of these requirements. Make sense? Specific bucket of money. All right. That was another bucket 20. This is bucket 40, funding. I brought this slide in just to show, it's something we don't highlight every year, but I do want to talk about specifically because our taxes raised also help pay for debt service. Just like when you pay off a loan or amortize mortgage every year, you know, your principal payment is less and less, well, your levy payment also is less and less every year. So I just wanted to highlight that over the past few years, the state aid number that's been there gets bigger and the tax levy gets smaller. Okay? That's how we fund projects we've already done. Now the fun stuff. Local tax levy, we are pleased to announce, we have brought in a balanced budget without increasing the tax levy this year for the first time, and I meant to look, if I had the spare time, which Lord knows I didn't, if I had the spare time, I was going to go back to see how far this goes. I know we had huge growth years, early 2000s, so I know it's been, since the cap was instilled, we've been going to cap. Even before then, we were doing double-digit growth on voting. So this is a huge, huge thing for Egg Harbor Township. I'm very proud to be a part of it. Debt service, local levy decreases annually. Cost of the penny, for the first time in a lot of years, we also have our property values going up in Egg Harbor Township for years. If every time our value goes down, the cost of our penny is like, not as valuable. I'm not going to go into the penny thing, but I will just say that our pennies are more valuable now, and our property value went up in the township. And I just want to take this opportunity to click a link and hope that it's there. Boop. Make this a little bit bigger, too. Sorry. Oh, is that going to let me make it bigger, Stephen? I feel like, do I have to actually open it? Cancel. Control and plus or something every day, guys. It just doesn't like me, it doesn't want to get any bigger. Just to show the history of the tax levy over the years, and although we've been going to cap year after year, I thought it was important to show, as a percentage of our entire budget, when you just take into consideration state aid and a tax levy, the burden is decreasing. The state is responsible for giving us, you know, fully funded education. Taxpayers are supposed to supplement it. It's been reversed for a very long time, but this will continue to go in the right direction. So I just want to show that. Highlight. All right, questions? Cost of a penny? It used to be $404,000 for one penny. Now it's $405,000. This is exciting. And of course, we do this chart every year. This year, we are in the first row. We are recommending no increase to the tax levy for $0.00. So that's exciting. And again, the state aid portion will continue to get bigger piece of the pie. 2018, the blue was the levy, gray was the tax, excuse me, state aid, and as you see now, the gray portion is 40%, and the taxpayer levy portion of our budget is much smaller. It'll continue to get that way. Gave a little history of revenue for state aid for you guys to have fun with later. I think we're good with that, right? All right, before we move to federal, we're good with local stuff, right? You guys, if you have, I guess, raise your hand if you have questions, or else I'll just keep going. Does that make sense? I don't want to keep asking. Federal aid, the revenue portion of the federal aid, which is SEMI. We talked about that opportunities for eligible children to get services here in school. I highlighted the COVID grants for '21 just because we had so much from the federal government to help us to try to get virtual ready and maintain virtual and maintain education, you know, whatever they do on the education side, so, you know, to get the kids where they need to be. There's CARES Grant, the Digital Divide Grant, as well as the Corona Relief Fund. Grants for '22, which we plan on seeing. We have the entitlement. We just haven't gotten the actual next step, which is coming middle of the month. But, SR2, this includes the same reasons we could use for the CARES Act, the 12 reasons, as well as learning loss and mental health. IDEA, ESSA, we spoke about these already. Good? That's federal aid coming in. That's that bucket coming in. Local, I did say already, tuition is gone. I want to say that again. I'm so excited, preschool. Rentals are a little decreased as well. We don't know what's happening. Interest going up, solar maintaining the same, and student activities are now going to be tracked and reported at the board level, starting in July. Maybe sooner if I feel, if I figure it out. All right. Remember the buckets. We did the state bucket, the federal bucket, the local bucket, and now we're talking about that surplus, which is hashtag savings. Just think surplus savings. This is the breakdown of the $10 million, which is on the other slide, but it's worth repeating. Savings from the audit, 5.6. Additional savings, we anticipate conservatively this year because of closures. People keep saying, when am I getting my tax credit? When am I going to get my money back? We're putting it right back into education. SR2 funding, SR2 funding was 4.2 million. We're going to take 1.5 of it and help the current budget state of events. The other, I can't do the math now because it's been a very long day, is going to go to the other side on '22, which we'll see later. Transfer from the reserve account, which we also mentioned, was the emergency reserve that was set up that we can now spend because health insurance is going to be double-digit, so unfortunately, we'll get there. Where did it all go? I'll just take a minute and just, I don't want to read it to you, but I'll read a few highlights. Salaries, $85 million. Employee benefits, that includes, workers, that includes FICA, like our security portion, that includes local pension for PERS employees. It includes DCRP for part-time employees, $30 million. Capital improvements, we talked about the $10 million from savings. Facilities budget is $5 million. Tuition for out-of-district placements for charter schools and for ACIT is about 4.7, 4.8 million. Transportation's budget, 4.7. Instructional supplies, textbooks and resources, 3.4 million. Insurances, and that's where you have workers' comp, general liability, auto, and something else I'm forgetting right now, 2.4 million. Other is basically, after all the big wigs, all the big things were done, it highlights, there's just other, like, little things, like ABA, you know? It's not that it's not an instructional thing, but it's just little things that just don't have a known category. Administrative costs, everybody likes to ask that question, about 1.4 million. That includes building principles. That includes building principals, vice principals, supervisor, everybody, central office, everybody, including our supplies, everything. Local preschool transfer, something different in this budget. Preschool expansion grant. They gave us money to have free preschool. General education only. We are required to still educate our special ed population. We are required to fund that locally. So the 1.6 million, you'll see as a budget line, transfer to Fund 20 is specifically the existing staff, paras, supplies, benefits, we had in our regular budget already before the expansion put in to as a transfer to the other fund to maintain the education for special ed population. I see Terry nodding, a few nods. Let's say it one more time. In this budget, we have to budget. We had five preschool, five preschool inclusion teachers and a floater to do special ed inclusion. That's what we had, plus some aids and some supplies. I'll keep it simple with the teachers. You're going to see in your budget line, those six teachers in their budget line with a line that says decreased transfer to Fund 20. Because you have to take that into, go ahead.
Can you, I think it's worth just reemphasizing, we've said it before.
Okay.
That is not new.
Is not new.
Not because we implemented universal preschool. That was always a mandate, that we were always required to educate that particular population.
And that is correct. And what we were doing before, that's a good point, Pete, and we have been doing it for years. So in order to meet that requirement of educating three-year-olds, as soon as they hit three, if they've been identified, early intervention, we had to then educate them. In order to not have 100% special ed class, you want them included with the general ed population so that they can learn skills and become closer to the general ed population and be part of that growing. We took tuition general ed students in the past. It was 200 a month for 10 months, and that helped kind of offset the required costs. So the transfer in this budget is not new money, is the existing money we had as a preschool budget, but has to be put into Fund 20, that special purpose fund, saying only for preschool. So that's a new line. Okay. Anything on this slide? We're going to dive deeper into each category, but go ahead, Ms. Bird. Exactly right. Taking it from the 10 bucket that was already there, it was already 1.6 million hiding in there, putting it into the 20 bucket identified to say specifically for the special ed population going through the preschool program. Exactly right. Not new money. Okay. Now. Expenses. Now we're going to go into each of those subcategories. Salary. Basically, we have the biggest bargaining unit. Also, the biggest chunk of our employees are in the bargaining unit, which is identified 3.25. That's in there. Principals and supervisors association, their contract expires in a few months. They're in there with a draft of a number raise, just because we have to give something to budget, as well as non-union, as well as some new staff recommendations, which we are going to get to. Because I will try and take it slow, make sure we have all of our buckets understandings, and then we can keep going. So I'm not going to hit you with that quite yet. Oh, here it is. I thought it was later on, sorry. Here we go. This is also in your binder, it's also going to go be talked about more thoroughly. I will just highlight as this is the bucket of money put in for new staff. At the high school, computer science teacher. What's happening is our STEM programs, our middle school programs are so strong, they get to high school and we don't have enough sections to complete their needs and fulfill that requirement. Sixth grade Spanish teacher, we have one, I believe, right now, going between two middle schools. Too many classes, too many students, if you look at her roster, how many she's responsible for, he or she. Nobody was identified there. We're hiring another one to help balance that out with the workload. Miller math teacher. Although it's a Miller math teacher for advanced math, that requirement, there is a retirement in one of the middle schools that we are going to then just repurpose, and you'll see that in a slide later. Instructional support. We have heard it. We hear you, as Mr. Castillon keeps reminding people, we do listen. We know there is a huge gap in achievement, we know there's a lot going on with, I don't want to say that, I don't want to speak, I'm not an educator. I will just say, we are very aware that COVID had an impact on education. I can say that safely. In order to fill that gap, in order to meet the needs, we're recommending from grades K to 8, nine remedial/intervention teachers. Physical therapists. We have a part-time physical therapist. We full-time based on our workload. I'm not designating that part-timer will be the full-timer, I'm saying positions. We have a part-time position, we need a full-time position. Support staff outside of the classroom. We added athletic trainer. We have, the number of athletes we have is comparable to just a regular college campus. We have one athletic trainer who better not get sick or get hurt or get COVID because then we can't, you know, have our sports run safely. So we're asking for an assistant athletic trainer. Another maintenance worker. Which we have learned at the high school, we had at the high school is a recent retirement. We felt, I'm not going to speak ill of him, I love him if he's watching, we felt, hey, towards the end of retirement, you kind of slowed it up. Maybe that's why work wasn't getting done. No. We have since been tracking work orders of Mr. Brennata for years now and looking at the demand at the high school just for preventative maintenance. They forget forward-thinking, forget reacting to, you know, claims, we're going to ask for another maintenance worker at the high school. We're going to see an exciting technology plan, which is going to make a lot of us happy. But in order to implement said plan, we will need another individual to work in IT specifically to work and manage devices. Armed, unarmed security guards, we'll talk philosophy when we get to that slide. We have these beautiful vestibules installed. Some are manned by secretaries, some are manned by security. Security can't monitor schools if they're sitting there, that sort of thing. Stipendent positions, an assistant cross-country coach, just based on volume. Assistant golf coach, same reason, supervising based on volume of children. Indoor percussion and indoor guard. Boosters have been funding this for years, because of the number of students that are out there, it's just a safety issue. We do need another of those as well. Questions before I move on? We are going to dive deep into separate sections, but if you have questions, I'd rather you head up and then we'll move around. Go ahead.
The assistant golf coach?
The assistant golf coach.
Is that for the boys team?
I will defer that to Mr. Santilli. Or actually, Dr. Herry, if you want to unmute, we can hear you, we just can't see you. Maybe I can get him up here. I'm not in that area. Is the assistant golf coach for boys or girls? It's a co-ed team. Oh, so it's just supervising general, okay.
Shandra, are you directing that question to me?
We can. What's going on? Do you know that answer, Dr. Herry?
Right now, it's a co-ed team, and based on some surveys that Mr. Palaquino has conducted, there seems to be interest to develop it into two separate teams, one female and one male team. And that's, that's the reason for the request for the second coach.
Based on the numbers of, thank you, Dr. Herry.
You're welcome.
Do you have another one or? I'll move on. You'll think about that, no problem. Mrs. Sullivan.
I'm wondering about Crew. I know years ago it was self-funded, wasn't it? How is Crew doing now?
I will again defer that to Ms. Dr. Herry, maybe he can follow up on that for the next meeting? I don't know if he has that right offhand, we may, we'll get that for you. What was that?
Unfortunately, I don't know that answer right off the top of my head, but I will contact the athletic director tomorrow and respond to the board members.
We do partially fund it, I don't, we don't fully fund that at this point. I know that fact, I don't know the details, so we'll get to some information on that. Yeah. Mrs. Solagi, you had a question?
I think I'll wait until you're done your presentation because I'll all forget.
Okay, write it down because we want to make sure we hit it. Very good. Yeah, all of you should take notes, too. I want to make sure you get your questions answered, this is for us. This is, you know, our interactive process, so. Okay, thank you, Dr. Herry, you can mute if you haven't already. All right. So we're moving on. Benefits. Chapter 44. The state, in its infinite wisdom, said, "Way too many people are leaving state health benefits plan. We've got to figure something out because the state health benefit plan is broke. The people who are staying can't afford to go anywhere else because their experience is so high, meaning you have so many claims. Nobody will get you, you know, a cheaper premium than the state will." So they were left with all these high premiums. We love state health benefits, why? We found better premiums at private. And after private, we became self-insured for even more premium law changes. So the state, in its infinite wisdom, came up with a plan and said, "We know what we're going to do, we're going to mandate, anybody hired after January 1 must switch to this plan, state employee plan. And we're going to offer a high deductible, low cost based on your salary." But there's a cap. Mathematically, won't go into bore you in details, it's just not going to work. Maybe a year, possibly two, it's not going to work. In a corporate township, what it means for us, we have employees who started after January 1. We had to have open enrollment, and we had about 120 or so switch to this new plan. Is it cheaper in our expense as a board? A hair. You'll see that, it's a hair cheaper. Is it more cost-effective for the employee? Absolutely. They're paying less in their contribution towards the benefit. So if a normal benefit would have been $30,000 for family, this new plan may be $27,000 for family. That employee who may have been giving $6,000 a year towards their benefit is now giving four. You're getting less charges for your plan, but you're also getting less contributions to offset said plan. So, to give you a visual of what I just said, because it's a lot. We had to report this to the state. I'll make this a little smaller so you can, I'm not going to show you the lines, I'm just showing you the concept of what had to happen. We had to take each type of coverage, single, parent, child, spousal, and family. Each plan we offer, how many employees are in said plan, the cost of the plan, the cost of the prescription that person individually has, total cost for the year annualized, and then how much they were contributing. This is based off of 2020 closed year, like the year that closed. Then they said, "And tell us how it impacted you in January." We had 60 days to do it. Same information, but now we offer EBC, oh, excuse me, the SEHB, State Employee Health Benefit Plan, and what that would mean to you. Because our premiums went down, it was 125,000, I wanted to say this slow. January 1 compared to June of '20. 125,000, different. They don't care that I actually have more employees than I had in June. They also don't care that we are self-funded and we have less premium, we have less contributions coming in now because of this defined plan. Like, they tell you what to charge. We have no say. So we're in experience, if you're self-funded, your experience is your experience, your bill is your bill. You go to the doctors, it's 100 bucks. We, as a district, pay that bill. And it's a fine plan, it doesn't matter what the bill is, you just pay a flat fee every month. On paper, the state report will show 125,000. We had a $300,000 impact from December to January. Real people, real timing, December's payments and contributions versus January's changes, 300,000 for the rest, from the six-month period we're going to see. Annualize that, $600,000 for next year, right? Then our friends Horizon are knocking on our door. All that free COVID stuff that helped us through this pandemic in the insurance world is going to catch up to us. They told us, it's very early, they don't like giving us numbers till late spring, we'll be talking about it again next few weeks, months. Anticipate 10. 10%, anticipate 10%. Maybe higher, maybe lower. Because the experience, we have been very fortunate that we pay for actual claims. So all the elective surgeries that didn't happen, we're not going to have payments this year. Which is why we think conservatively, we can save $2 million this year. Remember I told you that number before? Based on buses not running, maybe some health insurance money. It's a very conservative number to say, "I think we can save $2 million this year." Next year, in 2022, when everybody gets all those elective surgeries that they just had to wait for, our experience will go through the roof. Hence, the double-digit increase they're anticipating. So there's that. Hence, the solution to budget that million-dollar emergency reserve I think we're going to need. Year-to-year, 2021 budget versus next year. Oh, I didn't change that number. 24 should not be 24, it should be 23, and I'm 22 and a half. I apologize for that. I didn't change my EBC for the new hires, so that's that. That's a million and a half, I'll change the slide before you guys get it. It was a million and a half difference year-to-year in our budget, specifically because of the new lives we're recommending these hires, as well as premium changes. So the 1.5 million is right, not necessarily 24 million, but I'll get that updated. Other expenses related to benefits. Not employee benefits, employee benefits and other insurances. JIF, we are self-funded again for our liability insurance. Property, that's the fourth one I couldn't remember earlier. General Workers' Comp, General Liability Automotive and Property Coverage. PERS, again, pension contribution for non-certified staff. DCRP for part-time employees. FICA, state share payroll tax, or, excuse me, employer share payroll tax. Tuition reimbursement, we have contractual obligations. The board has made agreements with these parties to say, "Continue to educate. Bring your knowledge back to this district and we'll reimburse you for your education." For EHTEA, EHTPSA, and non-union staff. Sick time payout. Retirees who give notice by a certain date get their sick time unused paid out to them every July with a cap. And that spreadsheet is also provided to you in the binder, which ties into this number here. Questions on employees, salaries, and benefits? Those are the first few lines, and that, how did it go? Where did it go?
I have a question, Mr. Price.
Yes, Mr. Price.
While we're still on the page.
Sure.
Go back to DCRP pension contribution for part-time employees.
Yes.
Do all our part-time employees receive pension?
Correct. So unless you're retired from another pension system, like our gentleman back there, Mr. Vada, I'll call him out, retired police officer, police chief, excuse me. He is already part of a pension plan, he does not qualify for a pension with us. But DCRP is specifically for part-timers who don't meet the 30-hour requirement for pension in PERS or TPAF, which is what we are enrolled in as certified staff and uncertified staff.
Okay, so, so the part-time employees are eligible for that?
Yes.
I guess.
And we match. The difference is, so they may take 3% out of their pay.
Right.
We, as a district, have to match their contribution to 3%.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Any other questions? Salary, pension, benefits, insurances. When I say, "Where did it go?", that other slide up here, that white, this here, I'm going right down, okay? I'm going to go through all of them. A learning loss, social, emotional student achievement, that bucket of money. I will turn over next, I think, few slides to Mr. Santilli to highlight these words.
All right, so to give a little bit of background, there's been a lot of conversation around learning loss. Background here is, is pretty straightforward. Since COVID, of course, we've recognized, and it's not just an EHT issue, but it's this county, the state, the nation, that students, of course, have a learning loss. One of the things, and I guess I put a mantra up here, that we hope to be able to tackle with our current interventions and our future interventions that we have in place, is going to be the mantra that really students are just visiting tier three in terms of our response to intervention, they're not going to be living there. And the reason being is that we really look at this as, and we're hoping that through these interventions, this is just going to be a learning delay, not necessarily a learning loss, where we can't gain that momentum back as we move through the rest of the year. And this would also go into effect all of next year as we continue to analyze and assess our data. We have great interventions already in place. We follow an MTSS approach through response to intervention, INRS, all those things are mentioned here. I do mention as well that this is a holistic approach. We truly believe also that when you think about the term holistic, this is going to be about that embrace and also educate. Those two main terms, meaning we want to really, truly make sure that our students' mental health and social, emotional learning is met. That is where overcoming obstacles and life skills curriculums like that will come into effect, in addition to really then honing in on their academics. There also has been a lot of conversation about who would be entitled to participating in a program like this. This isn't for one particular subgroup. This is truly for using data pre-COVID. If a student, for instance, was tier one prior to If a student, for instance, was tier one prior to COVID and the coronavirus and this pandemic, and now we've identified that they have moved, for instance, to tier three, they would be a student that would be invited to participate in the programs that we're going to put in place. You can see here, a very brief shell in regards to the type of programming that we're looking to do, and the majority of money, when we talk about expenses here, would be to implement a program utilizing our current staff, teachers, counselors, behaviorists, all hands-on-deck approach to really trying to service our students. The main effect is going to be an introduction, or really a retreat, we call it, this summer, with the intent that that would continue all of next year through mentoring, that would happen on a bi-weekly basis is how we're looking at it now. Of course, transportation costs would be rolled into that, and of course, even incentives for students and professional development for things like overcoming obstacles and the like. So, those are some things, this is just a snapshot of what that's going to look like. Of course, more information's going to follow, and we're keeping our fingers crossed, I check E-Wig quite often to see where we stand with that grant, and right now it's still under review. But, you know, I put that image up there because success, as you know, isn't just a straight arrow, and it's not just a straight path to success, but rather sometimes a bumpy road, so that's kind of what we're faced with right now. Also, you know, Chandra had mentioned earlier as well, personnel and teaching staff, we are looking to move to part-time remedial teachers to full-time, and also hiring new staff, which would be interventionist. That work would be done during the day, of course, while learning loss would be really after hours in addition to the work that's being done during the day.
Excellent.
Very good.
So, the next.
Next bucket of money.
Next bucket of money, yes. So when you start thinking about supplies, some of the larger expenses we wanted to point out, and where those needs are, so I broke it down in three areas here, math, language arts, and science. There are some renewals that are coming up to be able to support curriculum instruction. So we have a six-year renewal for Big Ideas for our accelerated math program, you can see that's going to be in grades six through eight, and then also the high school for Algebra I, geometry, and Algebra II. There's a little bit of this program, for instance, and some of the curriculum supplies also dip down into fifth grade as well, so you may see that line there also, because we do have students that participate in our accelerated math program there. For English Language Arts, really it's just resources to continue our trajectory and where we are. It's really going to be replacement materials, things for writing workshop, you know, shared and guided reading materials, things like that. No real big ticket item there, it's just going to be to continue to support that work moving forward. And science, again, renewals, six-year renewal for grades four and five for Elevate Science, it's both print and digital material, so it gives us licensing. When you see a six-year renewal like that, that's what we're referring to, it's an online license as well as the print material. And then a six-year renewal for Interactive Science, again, for grades six through eight. And then an exciting initiative, something that we've been trying to get through and keep in the budget, and that's what we're referring to is our STEM bus. We do have a bus in transportation that we can utilize, and we really wanted to create an opportunity, and this was the genesis of our Supervisor of Science, that we could retrofit this particular bus, convert it, turn it into really a STEM bus on wheels where students can experience all kinds of different interactive activities, and we can take the show on the road, building to building, and do a lot of hands-on, you know, really just anything from engineering to science, there'll be solar panels, I mean, there's all kinds of ideas floating around, so we're excited to be able to hopefully get that off the ground as well.
Go for it.
All right.
SSS.
SSS, so, as a school safety specialist, this focuses on security. Ms. and I did talk about a lot of the upgrades that are taking place in all the buildings, you know, that the vestibule upgrades took place, and really what our focus right now is to be able to properly man all those vestibules. So, that is where you'll see unarmed guards being added, and then also unarmed guards are utilized for I can't tell you how many details. So, if you think past COVID and our times that we're in now, details are, there's something happening in EHT every single night, weekends, evenings, mornings, and we like to have the support for, not just through the community and use of facilities, you know, to support anybody coming in from the outside, but also for our own, you know, events that we have in district.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Price.
Mr. Price, I have a question. Security guards, right now they're all part-time, we have no full-time security guards, is that correct?
We have five full-time, three Class Threes, which are also full-time, but we have five of our own armed guards in addition to our security coordinator, so six total, that are armed, full-time. The rest are unarmed, part-time.
Okay, so how many are actually full-time again?
Full-time, we have a security coordinator and five full-time armed guards.
Full-time armed guards, but no full-time unarmed?
No full-time unarmed, they all work, they're 29 and a half or less hours.
29 and a half, all the armed.
Or less, correct.
How many do we have of the unarmed?
Meh, I have it in my book, I'll get it for you, we do have that number. It's, you can count the people in your book. I don't know right offhand. I know we have so many at the high school, we have basically right now, the concept is a bunch at the high school, two at each middle school that are unarmed because of the size. I think two at Miller unarmed.
I could pull it up for you, Mr. Price, in a minute.
And then, oh, there you go.
I'll pull up this spreadsheet.
All right, push pause, we'll pull it up.
Okay, that's all, that was my question.
And then the, yeah, no problem.
Get that out there, because I wanted to clarify, I wasn't sure how many actually were full-time.
Five.
Compared to part-time. And, so that.
Yep, five, five full-time.
Thank you.
No problem, and the coordinator. Mrs. Bird, you had your hand halfway, oh, sorry, Terry, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I had a question on the last slide, I should have vocalized myself.
Sure. This one here?
Yeah.
Or the one before, this one?
No, this one.
Go for it.
So, with the math and science, we have six-year renewals, but does that include updated materials for the standards?
Yes, correct. And we're going to talk a little bit about the standards, because that's going to fall under the bucket of money that covers curriculum writing and professional development.
Link it, and I, link it up a flash, if you want to. Yes, Mrs. Bird.
Thank you. You might be covering this at a later slide.
That's okay.
So, just, it's me, but, with these renewals and the continued use of these programs, are you going to show us the data to show that it's been successful in the past years before we renew it for future years?
I will defer that to our educators.
So are you referencing math, for instance, and Big Ideas, or any particular, or all?
Well, you know me, all.
Yeah, all.
But specifically, the ELA, to see what our reading, you know, what, how's our progress been tracked in the last few years? Are these programs working for our students? Do we see marked progress based on these programs? In math, are these programs working for our students? And so, are we getting our money's worth?
We can certainly share information, and I probably would entertain maybe at the next curriculum committee to be able to share that as well. You know, we have data that we track, and it's, a lot of the data would be through what we track for response to intervention, and, you know, our tiers, because we use a combination of Lincoln, MobiMax, you know, and a list goes on, FMP scores, and so on. All of that is compiled, and that is really based on different percentages, that is what determines if a student would fall within a tier one, tier two, or tier three category. So we do have all of that information.
Mrs. Bird?
Go for it. I am concerned, since we are coming out of a pandemic, post-COVID, virtual learning, that we are not adding more resources, resources in the ELA category, because our students are going to be very behind in their reading skills. And if they can't read, then they can't do math, they can't do science, and I do not feel strongly that Reading Writers Workshop and Fontis and Penel are going to intervene for students who are struggling in ways that we need it to do. So, I am very, very concerned, because we are, it says evidence-based practices, I strongly, strongly disagree that that is evidence-based practices, in my opinion. It doesn't follow the science, and it doesn't teach kids how to read, it teaches kids how to guess. So I'm concerned that we are not putting more resources into this to intervene before there's a major problem. We're adding all these intervention teachers for after the problem, we're not addressing getting the kids help before the problem too.
Just a comment on the bucket, and then you continue about the learning. As far as the bucket goes, there is money identified for resources as well, not just staff, but go ahead, Mr. Santilli.
So, we did have this conversation in curriculum. We had a follow-up conversation prior to a board meeting. If we need to revisit that again, we certainly can, and I would certainly entertain that. What you're seeing here is years of the board actually supporting resources to be able to have a focus on literacy. Our district goals have been centered around literacy for as long as I've been here, and they continue to be, because we don't feel that we've gotten, and, you know, we've gotten to 100%, we haven't achieved them, you know, to the degree that we're satisfied, so we continue to have that focus. I'd even go so far as, and maybe Ms. and I, we can pull up the amount of money that we have spent in resources on LLI kits and the like, to be able to support our teachers. This is just in addition to the resources that we already have, because the board has supported it over at least the last four years, and that's been a combination of board incurred funds as well as the use of title monies as well.
I would like to have that, more of an in-depth conversation. I understand that we did meet during curriculum, and I understand we had a follow-up meeting, but I still strongly disagree with this program, the programs that we're using. And I teach reading, and I know that we've, you know, we've added a little bit to it, but I don't think our teachers are trained in a way that are going to assist the kids that are really struggling using this program. So, I appreciate, you know, that you pointed out that we have met and discussed it, but even after all that added information, I'm still feeling very, very, very worried about the programs we have. So I would like to see more money in the ELA portion, or at least some figures as to why this is working for our district.
Okay, we can set something up.
Any other questions on the learning loss instructional security aspects? I will say in security, we did not get to, we've upgraded our cameras district-wide, starting with the high school, working down middle schools, Miller. We are now at the elementary level, we are waiting for the funding to come through to be able to complete that project we talked about earlier. Okay? Okay. Technology plan, separate bucket, so we're done, I'm trying to keep everything in a tone, technology plan. Mr. Erdbay and Mr. Sweeter, I keep using the wrong mouse, I don't know why this one's here. Mr. Erdbay and Mr. Sweeter responded, they came to a budget meeting, and they talked about their, you know, their budget, and their budget were, you know, some pieces of equipment for some replacement projectors, and then you also saw some sprinkled throughout the schools, who the schools identified, we need new projectors and things. Then every principal supervisor's department area had their own opinions of Chromebook, Chromecart, tablet, tech tub. So we, Mr. Erdbay and Mr. Sweeter came, we said, please, come up with a plan, district-wide, philosophy, district-wide, and we'll take it out of everybody else's budget, and you're just, you know, going to maintain what we need and how we do it. Like, I gave them the example of the bus replacement plan we came up with years ago. These are all the buses, left to right, over all the years, what's going to die when? And they came through like champs, very proud of what they put together. So this is a big document, I will just highlight the philosophy, and we will talk about the allocation. So philosophically, I can't, here's the words here. The proposal is three-to-one ratio for pre-K and kindergarten for tablets stored in tech tubs. One-to-one ratio for grades one through five, stored in Chromecarts in classrooms. Six through 12, Chromebooks with cases and insurance to go back and forth, one-to-one. That's the philosophy. We did get some funding this year to be able to help us replace some of the older models, and we are looking at funding this year with the ESTR funding and that sort of thing, other financing mechanisms, to be able to make that happen. We're taking existing equipment, pretty much K5, or, you know, the ones for tablets we just purchased this year, pre-KK, one through five, we'll use all of our existing equipment, one-to-one, when they get back, after we look at all the damaged pieces. Sixth grade through 12th grade, this year, with our funding, we're going to, we have the ESTR funding, we're able to get the one-to-one new devices. Sixth grade will keep it their entire middle school time, it is theirs, they take it home, they take it back, if it breaks, it dies, we're going to have insurance on it, but that is going to be their device. Seventh and eighth grader are also getting new devices, but at the end of 2022, we'll go back into the pool for the younger grades that have the older ones. Ninth graders will get one, freshman year, with a case, with insurance, to and from school, and they have their entire high school career. And Google, in its infinite wisdom, only licenses these things up to four years as of right now, maybe it'll change in the future. So when they're a senior, they can keep it, because it means absolutely nothing to us, we can't even do, use it, use anything for it, not even let your kid play with it, it's obsolete, they will not update it, it will not do anything Chrome, Google-ish on that Chromebook. 10th through 12th, when they get it this year, if they don't already have a used one, if they got a new one, we'll go back into the pool. For the board, for future budgets, every year, sixth grade and ninth grade population will be in the budget, and we will just continue this. Sixth grade and ninth grade, every year, and then the older devices, after the eighth grade year, those older devices can then fill in for the younger grades. That's the plan. Who's excited? I know I am. Thank you, Mr. Erdbay and Mr. Sweeter. All right. Projection, projectors. This is just, I'll show you what they did, doesn't matter, it's fun for me, because it's a spreadsheet, I'm not going to bore you with it. They identified what devices, the age of the devices, location of the devices, and came up with a plan that says, we need so many that are dying or dead already, and then from that on, we'll have a more, if you look future years, they planned out the replacement plan. So this particular budget does support the replacement of broken projectors, installing projectors where they aren't, because of all the movement we've been having recently, and making us a good, very good starting point with a technology budget as well as lease purchase. That's the technology budget, bucket, excuse me, budget bucket, good? Questions? Moving on.
Ms. and I, I have a question.
Hello, I'm going to try to put your face up here, hold on, if I can't screw it up too bad.
That's fine, you don't have to.
There you go.
No, it was just, it was just a quick question, though, for the technology plan, are we having anything to do with the Chromebooks, with bags or anything, for people transporting their Chromebooks back and forth to the?
Yes, I called it a case, but yes, it's a travel case to go to and from, it's a protector case, I'm not sure if it has a strap, maybe Mr. Santilli knows that right offhand, it does have a strap, he's nodding, for them to be able to take it to and fro, yes, for sixth grade through 12th grade. Can, first grade through fifth grade will keep them here.
Thank you very much.
No problem. Mrs. Bird?
For the students that are economically disadvantaged, will there be some kind of program set up for them in case they do break their equipment?
I'm going to speak slower, with a case and with insurance, I didn't, I said it way too quick. With insurance, with a case, we as a district are going to pay for that, because we believe in them being able to, excuse me, go back and forth. They will, just like they do now, user agreement with using internet, they will do a user agreement with using these devices. If we find it's abuse, if they want to chuck it at their friend, you know, in the parking lot, that's different. But as far as normal wear and tear, or if an accident happens at home, the stress of that is just, shouldn't be on a child, so we are going to have insurance for those devices. No problem.
Sandra, it's Mr. Price again, I just have a quick question about the Chromebooks. How are you for chargers? Do you seem to need a lot of extra chargers, or?
I will defer that to my technology department. I don't know that answer right offhand.
Do they seem to come separate, and maybe people losing chargers, or is it pretty much a?
That might become a thing. I will, Mr., I'm sure Mr. Erdbay's watching, I will have him follow up for us for next week.
Yeah, find out how many chargers you're needing to give your face that are misplaced, or whatever the case may be.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Good, anything else, technology bucket? All right, I'm going to try to do this back and see what happens. Transportation bucket. Same with philosophy, we spoke about a few weeks ago, there are several. Same with philosophy, we spoke about a few weeks ago. There are several vacancies. We are working on a new onboarding plan. I got actually the manual Monday. I got everything, our director, thank you, Ms. Fisher, put together a package for rolling it out, rolling out the increases, rolling out the onboarding. Social media worked, worked with our department to get things, you know, lined up. I got it either Friday or Monday. It's all a blur, but it's been budget mode, so I will look at it this week and get that ball rolling. We are bringing more runs in-house. We are purchasing with our replacement plan. Six fifty-four passengers because they are actually, need to be replaced. And we're phasing in another two thirty-nine passengers. What I want to do, and I probably will for next meeting, just to give another update on that, is how many minis, thirty-nine passengers and wheelchair presses we've purchased in the last three years as part of this initiative. We're getting all of our equipment ready, guys. We just need the people. We just need the people. So. Buildings, facilities. Our newest building. Our high school addition in 2012. But newest building, brand new, our primary buildings, '07. Really, we're done in '09-ish, we'll say. About time they were completed. We're going into 2022. We have done a fantastic job maintaining our buildings, doing all the preventative maintenance in the world. But there are some things we've identified that need to be done in this budget. It's in the wrong order, so I'll go back to that one. In this budget, you'll see the facilities department has the fixed costs they do every year, light bulb changes, replacements of carpets here and there, paint here and there. You'll see it very, it's categorized. The way Mr. Brennett set his budget in the budget binder, you're gonna find the expense breakdown, like the details you like to see of all the lines of what makes up that number is in the district-wide account, the words, and then every school has their percentage allocation based on square footage. So for a paint budget, if we spend $100 on paint, he took the total square footage of each building and kind of allocated by building how much that paint was gonna cost or be charged to that specific account. In specific school areas, there are some safety issues with chain link fences that were identified. Not too much, but just, that's all that's really in his budget for next year. There are lease purchase equipments, which I'm gonna go into next, as well as capital and projects identified. I was supposed to move this link to the next slide. That's really, I zoomed the heck out of that. What am I showing here? The lease list, lease purchase. All right. So every year, we've come to the board and say, to get the biggest bang for our buck, I don't know what's happening here, denied. We should be, you know, try financing some things. The interest rates are so low right now. Instead of putting out millions of dollars, let's spread it over five years or so. And how about if I can do, just try to download it and see if that works better? I'm gonna try to download the PDF and see if that works. And it did. Good. Oh, that's the wrong link though. Go back. Everybody close your eyes. It's the path of my life. Board, oops. Exhibits, lease purchase. Okay. And this is again in your binder. I won't spend too much time on it here. Facilities department has some grounds equipment to replace. Some van, one van, one, we're doing good with our vehicles now that we, that was a huge phase in. We were doing four or five a year. We're at the point now, it's the last two, and we should be good for another two or three years. We have a van and a pickup with a plow. As well as we identified PA systems. So all the PA systems may be a project, the, what we're doing is replacing kind with kind, so I have to just buy it. And then I'll pay somebody to put it in. So that's what they have in facilities world. Transportation, we talked about the buses. And IT, we talked about the projectors, some replacement computers that are not outside of the scope of things. And poster printer that came up in Davenport for a replacement. I can't talk, I'm sorry. And then network routers and backbones and fun things IT does. So a total of, we're gonna look at lease purchasing about $3 million and paying for that over the next five years. And that's also in this budget. Capital projects identified, which I think already opened. It did. All right. So this is very small. Don't worry. Don't try to read it. I categorized it and it's in your book. So projects identified, we basically went through with facilities and did an analysis of projects that need, in our opinions, need to be done in the next three years or so. Specifically categorized, which we can go find in your binders, is HVAC. You guys remember that image? 662 devices. My numbers are small here. Fifty-two million there. Parking lots, pavements, Miller, staff parking. We hear you, we know, we hear you, we recognize. It's a lot of money to get it done. We do need another parking lot at Miller. That's something that's like $7 million. Roofing throughout the district. We did a roof assessment. The architect and engineer, structural engineer, went on all of our roofs and these are sections that were identified for about $8 million that are in need of improvement. Solar. So this second page are, I kind of put it like priority order after we're thinking about it. Thank you, Dr. Gritcher, for that little input, because it was kind of by school. I did it by category. So HVAC we know is need. Rooftops are pretty serious. You know, lot, parking lots and surface, resurfacing areas. Solar, solar is an expansion. It's something we want to do. By doing it, saves us energy, generates revenue. Double whammy, so we added that in there. As far as we looked at the size, the locations, took a lot of work to get there. Since we started our Neighbors for Change, that kind of died last year. I still continued with that in the back. And we came up with some solar projects for 6.8 million. And then, as you know, in previous presentations, we have the vision of what our fields should look like, more practice fields, the reconfiguration of the field. All of that is in there for about $9 million. So projects identified are categorized by chunk for a total of $84 million. With the availability of state aid, if possible, for $24 million. So we keep hearing, do what you can do locally, get as much done as we can with our own money. So we talked about that $10 million of our own savings over the years. Our recommendation is to spend that on capital improvements, specifically in this budget. So the budget changes year to year. There's some things in there. We highlighted throughout this whole presentation. Maintaining our buildings so students can learn is just as important, and we're asking for an influx this year of $10 million. Hoping the board commits to another five per year after that to put a dent in this huge need. Okay? Questions on facilities? Preschool fund, this is the best part now. Preschool expansion. We currently refunded for 212 general ed students. With the expansion, we had a lot of nerves. They let us know, open up 20 new classrooms, 14 on campus, six with a partner. We didn't think we would get 2.8 million of the governor's $10 million allocation. Little old HT in South Jersey. Huge, huge, huge accomplishment. Very proud of it. With that, we kept the ball rolling. We asked for another 20 classrooms. They laughed and said, stop being so ambitious. They gave us 60 more kids, funding for 60 more students. There is more to follow on this, and we are gonna speak about it at our next meeting because we do have a meeting with the community. Anybody's welcome. However, we did invite local partners who have existing preschools, who have come to our previous meetings over the years to come, let's talk. This is what our expectation is, interest in partnering, all that fun stuff. At the conclusion of all that, there will be a board presentation because the board has to contract with providers. You have to make an agreement of who you want to service your children. So that's more to follow. This last go-around, we kind of made administrative decisions to help it because we needed to get the ball rolling right away. But we're gonna have a better, longer process in this one. The grant in this budget is 3.8 million along with the local funds of the 1.6 we spoke about for the specialized population as well. Bucket of preschool. Any questions there? More to follow, but this is just not tonight, unless you have questions. Okay? All right. How we doing, guys? Binders. Let's take a stand-up stretch break. If you would like, just stand in your spot. We're gonna give you the binders. We're gonna be walking through. So those at home, binders are coming. Literally hot off the press, so you're gonna get them. Patrick will talk. The other two will talk, but they're coming. For now, follow along, make, take notes. You'll also have this presentation to keep referencing. All right. We ready? Almost? Everybody has a binder? All right. Binders. All right, we're gonna walk through. It's a lot. We just digested. You didn't swallow. I know you're still dealing with it, but we're gonna walk through this and then you're gonna have fun at home. All right. The order of events. If you flip open your binder, starting with the first page, enrollment projections for next year, by grade, by school. Fun, fun. Okay? Digest that. Next page. Revenue sources. That's basically a slide I showed that you're also gonna have to look at whenever you feel like it. Oh, I skipped a page. Tax levy information, flat. I love the next slide. The next one, I'll put, actually I put it up here for those at home. It is called, Where Did It Go? Cancel you. What in the world? Cancel. Download that, try that. All right, this is Where Did It Go? Here's our buckets. This is a recap of our buckets. I see you all flipping feverishly, but we're gonna try to catch you where you're looking, see what you're looking at. I tried doing green and red. Money coming in, identified in buckets A through E. And below it is Where Did It Go? By A through E in the categories. Okay? Then we have personnel pages, the new personnel recommendations by school, by department. Lease purchase detail, which I showed earlier, capital projects identified, which I showed earlier, sick time payout, which we talked about, as well as the pink pages. Go into all the detailed expenses. We're gonna kind of walk through that in sections, if you will. This is in order of the binder. You will have this PowerPoint as a reference or a slideshow, or you can take notes. The account numbers are in numerical order. They have dashes in between, but they are in numerical order. So we're just gonna follow down what's where. So tuition goes first. And that's for charter, out of district, ACIT, as well as transient students. And I will stop there because you have your binders open and show you, refresh your memory on what these, what these numbers mean. Let me open this up. I thought I saved, um, I did save it. Download here. All right. So just to give you a background, it's not what you're used to in the perpendicular, you used to get landscape pages, but just as a refresher, you have the years of history at the top. Original budget, adjusted budget, which means after transfers or rolled over, encumbrances. And then you have expenditures, what was actually spent that year. Then in the box at the bottom of the words, it says your budget for 2022. So that's what the box is made. This is not, this is just an example page. It's not really what's in there. I was just trying to, ori, ori, and we had this conversation maybe a month ago to say the budgets were gonna look different. All right. So let's go back to the order of events. We have tuition. Then you go into attendance and truancy. And then you have nurse and health services in the 213 accounts. Related services, that's where you'll find your OTPT speech, test kits, therapies, sorts of things for related services for students. Extraordinary services, 217, this is specifically above and beyond programmatic needs with the specialized population. And if a student accumulates more than $40,000 worth of costs to educate that student, we then get partial reimbursement from the state, which is extraordinary aid. The guidance department, that area will highlight student records, Navions, standardized testing, social emotional resources. If I go too fast, just say something. 219 goes into your child study team areas, staffing, resources needed for that. 221, I will defer to Mr. Santilli to highlight the area of curricular supports and facilitators.
Are you in the binder now?
I am in the binder. Pink pages.
Tell us where.
Sorry. So we started, um, all right. So tuition for charter, page one. Tuitions go through pages one through four, excuse me, one through three. Starting on page four, you start with attendance. Page five starts nursing services and salaries. And Jamie, if you can jot these down so I can actually update the slides, just write the categories I'm saying. Thank you. My best helper ever. On page 12 starts related services. Let me go back to that. Extraordinary starts on page, starts on page 20. Extraordinary aids, services, purchase services, and salaries. And that goes on for quite a while. And after extraordinary services, we'll go into guidance. That's on page 33. Is the guidance department. And that's where you'll see resources for guidance and social emotional supports and salaries for that department. Child study team starts on page 44. Forty, no, 42. Sorry. 42, child study, child study team. And I will turn it over to Steve on page
52.
Page 52 is where Mr. Santilli will start his 221 highlights.
So that's copier Reynolds. I'm just kidding.
The top of the page is copier Reynolds. For the CST department.
So ultimately, this is, looks as if it's covered CST. Also, if I'm not mistaken, this would be where our supports for, for instance, literacy coaches would also fall as well. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Starting on page 42 or 52. Starting on page 42 or 52. Sorry. Did you want to say anything about the slide? That's where I was, just to highlight the department, I guess.
Yeah, ultimately, for, in terms of the literacy coaches' support in regards to our literacy program and provide interventions that are needed, you know, to push into the classroom.
Well, curriculum writing, I don't know if you want to highlight anything.
Curriculum, curriculum writing, you know, in terms of, curriculum writing would fall into a different line here, but curriculum writing in addition to that, one of the things I highlighted here were two different initiatives. Standards one for visual and performing arts, standard five for science, standard seven for role languages, and standard nine for career readiness and literacy, or life skills and key skills. They're all been adopted by the state board and ultimately require curriculum revisions. So that's going to be something that we will be planning for, not just to take place for this year, but also throughout the summer. They would have to be implemented for September of 21. Standard two, which is comprehensive health and PE, standard six for social studies, and standard eight for computer science and design thinking are for September of 22. But, you know, we will always plan ahead and try to, try to move forward with trying to get revisions done for NJ learning standards. So, and also, one of the other things that we're going to be focusing on doing for curriculum writing is our, we did 2020, 2020 standards as well, to be able to update those. And we plan to do that this summer. Just some highlights. There's, there's other curriculum writing that would also be taking place, but this was some of the main highlights I wanted to point out that were state initiatives.
Thank you. And library and ABA supports starts on page 56, 55.
So some highlights for library and ABA support services. It covers everything, covers the gamut of pretty much anything that you would ever see in our media centers. Everything from supplies such as library books. That does include the mid-year acquisitions. We do focus mid-year on trying to determine the award-winning books that we want to bring into our libraries, periodicals, audiobooks, for instance, things like that. In addition to that, there's naturally operational supplies. I can say that, you know, our, our media specialists do an excellent, excellent job in salvaging every single thing that they can, oftentimes even vending books to, to keep them going and kind of get, get a little bit more life out of them. Of course, general resources are part of that as well. Subscription services, as you can imagine, especially over the last year, things have become more online and more digital. So subscription services for, for different resources. We do utilize cataloging and processing fees and circulation. Subscriptions like book flicks, you know, at the different levels and Flipster online magazines are noted there. And then, of course, in the libraries, they do have a stream initiative. So we do support with some supplies for kids to have that hands-on experience in the area of stream as well.
Thank you. And then 223 instructional staffing starts on page 65.
So in terms of instructional staffing, you know, a couple of things that I noted here and, you know, that, just points of interest. This is just a small snapshot again. You know, link and on-course renewals that would fall under this category. And everything from paraprofessional educator online training to phonics, structured literacy for K to 12, model workshop for mathematics. We do have a partnership and, and we want to be able to continue that in that area as well for that math workshop model. And then, of course, comprehension intervention training. One of the things I wanted to point out, and Ms. Bird, to go along with what you were, you were referencing before, one of the things that we have going on in the district right now is a reading committee that's being led by Mr. Dorso. We do have within the budget, of course, you know, earmarked monies for a multi-sensory program to be able to support our literacy initiatives. I'm, I'm not going to right now name that program because I want to, out of respect to the committee, let them go through that process. But we, we are, that is in the works and not part of this line. But what I also would note is that there's also increases in special education areas to also support that work as well for different supplies and different resources to meet, you know, our teachers' needs in the classroom.
Thank you. Then we go into administrative lines for superintendent and board of education. It's lines 230, starting on page 56, starting on bottom page 56. And that includes legal services, auditor services, insurances, HR services, policies, policy payment for our vendor, as well as our agenda purchase services. 240 starts building administration, and that's going to begin on page 73. And that's for building, to run the buildings administratively, whether it's the vice principal, principal, resources for the building, like copy paper, things like that. All stayed within their budget. No significant increases there. But those are the 240 lines. 251 is the business office and renewals for, renewals for some contracts. And that is on page.
88?
Page 88? My glasses are so blind. 86, little baby. Page 86 starts there. Copier leases for district-wide building, front offices and our child study team, as well as supplies and resources for the business office and some contract renewals. Nothing crazy there. 252 is our district computer and technology area. And that is on page. Page 90 is that area. Starts there. Data center is what they call it. That's where you're going to find a lot of the renewals for our contracts for district-wide licensing and that sort of thing. 261, and I'll just say the facilities department as a whole is 261 through 263 from maintenance grounds and security, excuse me, maintenance grounds, custodial, as well as security. Starts on page 92. And that is for maintaining the buildings. Allocated my square footage like I explained the, the allocations there. Custodial supplies and ground, building services, that's clean materials, uniforms, and salaries for each location, as well as utility bills. It's going to be 262 lines. And that starts on page 102. And then we go into our grounds department, which will start on page 122. And that's for supplies and resources for grounds departments such as salt, mulch trimmers, staffing, those sorts of things. Security starts on page 124. And that's for staff, highlighting the nine part-time unarmed guards. Transportation starts on page 126. And we discussed those highlights already. And then we go into employee benefits that we discussed earlier. Employee benefits will start on page 143. That's health, dental, prescription, tuition, all that fun stuff. And then we start with the educational resources. Starting with general education resources is all the salary, instructional supplies for general education, and resources needed, textbook supplies, staffing, all that fun stuff. That starts on page 148. And that will go for quite some time through. You guys okay? That goes on for quite some time. The next section starts our special ed programs, self-contained areas on page 210, specifically our MT program. And our resource rooms, which is in class supports as well as pullouts, starts on page 220. And then we go with the full-time preschool disabled program, which is different from the inclusive program we spoke about earlier that goes into that other bucket. This stays in this bucket. And that starts on page 237, 237. Okay? Basic skills, interventions, called a lot of things. Our heroes, really. Start on page 242. And goes right into bilingual services on 246. Then we start our clubs and activities, inclusive of the recommendations made on page 251. And then sporting starts on page 257. Some highlights there. We talked about the volume requiring the second athletic trainer. There's some data for you there, as well as the assistant coaches are listed in here as well. And then we go into our alternative program. Eagle Academy starts on page 264. And Fund 12, which is the very last page, page 268, shows our EDA assessment, as Mr. Castellano said, did not go away, as well as the transfer to capital reserve for identified building improvements, which we talked about already. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
This EDA assessment, have you been keeping track of how much we've been paying over the years and compared to what the cost of the project was?
I will, yes, and I will give an update, make a, jot that. I'll make a note for that to update next meeting as well. That's a fun fact. Yep. And that's specifically for the community. Go ahead, Pete. Did you want to say something?
I think it's in the testimony.
Do you have a testimony right there, Mr. Castellano? Look at you.
As of March 2020.
Okay.
Five million, 537,595 dollars.
So add a year to that.
And one year on top.
Yep.
That's still a lot of money that.
It is.
It is.
What, like almost 7 million now then?
Oh, over six, yeah. Yep. And for those who are not familiar with what we're talking about, we built buildings, our primary buildings, as well as the addition to the high school. And the state said, you're in a high-growth area. You have to serve these kids. We're going to help you out and help fund, along with the bonds and funds raised in your local tax levy, we're going to help match that. And we're going to help you build these buildings. They never told us we'd have to pay it back. And we've been assessed, but not from the SDA, that doesn't exist anymore. Now it's the EDA, over 500,000 a year ever since.
Was it in the contract?
Was not in the contract.
Remember, we were able to get that cap. They were going to raise it.
Correct.
It was going to go up. They were going to double it, but it's still, it's.
It's an annoyance, and it's not something that's right. It's half a million dollars a year. Over the years, over 6 million, almost 7 million dollars.
It's absolutely unjustified.
Yep. Yes, Mrs. Sullivan?
This is the, you know how long I've been working budgets with you, quite a few years. This is really fantastic way that you put it together this year because if I want to look at what special ed is spending, I can go and see the employees, everything. We're right in the category they belong. So I love the way you put this together this year.
Thank you. I will say, again, we talked about this being draft one. So we used our HR software as well as a lot of edits. So if you look at a salary line and you have a person's name in caps and somebody not in caps, that's next week's cleanup. We wanted to make sure the data was in and it was correct. So the format and the personnel-specific areas, we tried to, you know, integrate it into this budget because usually it's a separate document. The time to clean up, it wasn't there. But, so the formatting isn't right, but the, you know, information should be pretty good.
Well, I can, I can see the work you put into it. It's, it's amazing.
Thank you.
Your whole staff, tell yourself.
We're getting there. We're almost done, guys. I know it's already quarter to nine. We're getting there. You had Mrs. Salagi?
Yes. It's been a long time coming that we were fairly funded.
Yes.
A little bit of history, four years ago, the finance committee, which consisted of Mr. Ellis, Mrs. Sullivan, and myself, we challenged Mrs. Anaya to come up with this zero increase. And because of the pandemic, it took her four years instead of three. And I went, thank you for, for meeting that challenge. Now, I guess the question that I have is, I see some extra money, not extra money, but I see some big numbers. And is it possible to reduce the tax levy? I know you've met the one challenge, but could we go another step farther?
So that committee was, at that time, Dr. Guccio challenged the entire district, come up with a three-to-five-year plan. So three to five was the range, so I think I'm okay. There was a lot of concern of what would happen this year if we didn't get additional funding. And we did have conversations about, there's only so much Chandra can do. It's really about what the state ate. If we continue to get funded A2S2, projecting out, I felt this was the year we could go flat, which we can going into the future. We could actually, you know, look at giving some relief. I can't speak for the, I am not speaking for anybody outside of my, my stance and my knowledge of the history here. We've not talked central administratively. This is our budget. We propose a balanced budget at zero. It is too important to not put money into capital. The influx of money that has come in this year '21 and next year '22 that helped offset our general costs are for one-time fixes. Can't be for things that are going to be recurring year after year. So capital was that perfect split spot to say, this is the opportunity we have right now. We identified 84 million dollars worth of things that have to be done. What we don't want to happen is tax relief and then ask later for more. When you call, it's called banked cap. If I don't go to cap now, which happens this year, it goes into this fund the state recognizes called banked cap. I didn't use it, so I can bank it. What we really don't, I mean, we have three years to use it. The goal is to hold it flat and never touch the banked cap. Because if we have a bad year, taxpayers pay now, pay later. We're trying to just keep it even keeled. That's the goal with this budget. I hope that answers your question.
You said draft, and that's why I just thought that I would throw it out there.
Well, draft as far as its aesthetics. As far as we worked very hard to prepare a balanced budget, it has technology that's been demanded. It has capital improvements. It has interventions, curricular requirements to make us, you know, move to the next level. I think we hit everything to meet our board goals, our district goals. I'm sorry, what was that? It's balanced, right. And it was balanced in every way.
The reason that I asked is because of the loss that we talked about. And hearing that there might be some more funding out there for that, I kind of feel like we could expect some more money coming before September.
That's the 4.2 million. They made us aware of already. I don't know if there's going to be more than that. Last year, we got just shy of 3 million. So the 4.2, we were told we were going to get more, and we did. It's 4.2, not the 3. So I can't say we're not going to. I will stop the presentation, see if they want to say anything here. Because I'm not done yet, but we would definitely, it's a good, it's a good moment to pause.
Mrs. Anaya?
Yes.
I'm just trying to follow along since I'm virtual. Are we in board member comment, or are we in, still in the budget presentation?
So we are in the budget presentation. We're in the budget presentation. But I did at the beginning state, as we go along, it is the board's meeting to understand the budget. So the dialogue can be as we go, and they've been asking questions along the way. You don't have the binder in front of you, and I understand that. I apologize for that. But you can definitely ask questions, and I don't mind explaining a little bit more. But this is the time for us to interactively discuss what's being proposed. At the end, we can actually have general, I guess, kind of comments. Like, I know what you're saying, that this was overall, there's an overarching comment just now, but not done yet. So do you have something?
Thank you.
Okay. So if you want to go into finishing, unless there's a board, a question about the area we're in, the bucket we're in right now is binders. We just walked through the binder, but we're going to, if there's a question about that bucket, and then we can move on to the finish and then ask overarching. Does that make sense? Unless, did you have something specific to budget, to the binder rather? I'm sorry, Mrs. Alvaro. Mrs. Alvarada?
I don't know if it's in that binder.
Okay, you can ask, and then we'll see.
I haven't quite had time to look through the whole thing yet.
No, go ahead. No, as far as how, orienting to what's where, orienting to what's where is really what it was, sorry.
Okay.
Go ahead.
It actually just popped in my mind when the curriculum materials were up, I didn't see anything about that social studies program, Mike Strong.
Good question.
So based off of where we are, and it was a tough decision, especially for a former social studies guru, it's definitely a valued resource, and I think we made a note even that we were, I think I had made Miss Anaya promise that we wouldn't forget this for next year in our notes, but ultimately, our focus right now is going to be on trying to make sure that we focus in on students that may have that learning delay like we talked about, and I don't want to provide additional, an additional burden, let's say, in professional development, a new curriculum to our elementary staff during this time, and especially not knowing and not being able to recognize what September is necessarily even going to look like. So I think we made that decision, it was a tough one, but it's something that we are definitely going to circle back to, and the good news is, is that we were ahead of the game with that, because the standards for social studies, we have until twenty-two to have in place, so.
And if you want to highlight, Mr. Santilli, the fact that you are actually doing the curriculum, if you didn't, maybe you already said, I was drinking water, that you are doing the work to prepare for this year, though.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, we're still looking forward with the curriculum.
Okay. Let me go back to my present mood and finish this bad boy up. All right. Okay, so we were talking about the deposit for capital projects, reminding you of that image, there's two links for the same document, sorry about that. Okay, low look, we're almost done. Budget calendar, budget calendar, this is a bucket, too, because we do need to discuss this. We are at March second, second of something, thank you for that. Board presentation for balanced budget with binders, mission accomplished. Work session and budget discussion next week, can't wait, basically what happens for those who don't recall, you will have a new set to put into, bring your binders back next week, because you're going to have a new set to put right in the front of what you have now, as the budget keeps evolving, the cleanup and language and things like that. Two weeks from now, we will be doing a vote on the budget to send to the county office. As a reminder, that is specifically, you're voting on, my budget will be this dollar amount, and my local levy will be this dollar amount. You're voting on a total, we can still work with the guts, move things around to meet goals as needed, but the total has to be sent to the county after that meeting, and for the budget total and the levy total. In between that meeting and the budget hearing, which is April twenty-seventh, well, not that late, because that's the hearing, we can move things around, if as needed, or just accept the budget as a balanced budget. Once the county office goes through and does their thing, I may come back and say, hey, they made this recommendation, and also on your end, you may have recommendations, interactive process. Once it's at the county, the question is, I think, Mr. Castellano, you know, just speaking about the budget calendar, looking forward, I don't know if I'm going to need the twenty-third, it really depends on how we do. The next few weeks, we came in balanced, which usually we come in over, and we have this interactive process of the board prioritization, but I think we can entertain that maybe later on, when we go to board discussion, but wanted to just put that out there.
Okay, yeah, we'll talk about that later tonight.
And work session, ongoing discussion, and then the regular meeting for the budget hearing. That was supposed to be somewhere else, I will move that up, that's a recap of all the grants and the amounts and what they went towards, so I will slide that up into that bucket of Fund Twenty. Thank you for the board, for two hours of entertainment, my entertainment, you're welcome. The business office staff that I slaved so hard this past week, I really appreciate, they didn't eat dinner tonight, I'm just saying. My assistant, Amy and Jamie, did not eat, none of us ate today, but we're going to, we're going to be okay. Central administration, you guys, what bucket does it go in, right? Building principals and supervisors and putting the work in to actually enter all the fun stuff that you put into the budget, and working with us when it came to all the questions, I really appreciate that, program directors, you guys do it every day, all day. And our community, our community has been so patient with our budgets, looks very positive going forward for our community, we can finally, you know, have a great presentation today, hopefully. Okay?
Excellent.
I think I'm going to put the board members back up and take a seat, and we can entertain further conversation, is that okay?
I'm going to just, I'm going to see if there's board member questions or comments on the budget.
Before I say, that's true.
Before we go to public comment, and I'm just going to start it off just by thanking you, Chandra and Jamie, and the entire administration for doing such excellent work on this, and with the turnaround time that you had, after all the effort, we had to go into road back and road forward, we had to immediately pivot, get our state numbers, came in, and immediately turn around and put all this out, so I know you guys.
And it's a lot, it was twenty million dollars of new funding, and I hope you guys understood the buckets.
Yep.
That hopefully that really, yeah, thank you.
So I just wanted to thank you guys for a lot of hard work.
Yep.
Very much appreciated. And with that, we'll go to board member questions or comments on budget, I see, Mrs. Byrd first, Mrs. Sullivan next.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, very, very, very good job.
Thank you.
You explained things very well, and slower than normal, so.
I tried to slow it down tonight.
Yeah, that was a very, very good job, and the goals of the district are definitely represented in our budget, so.
We're hoping it resonated very clearly, so that's good to hear, very good.
I think the fact that in a year of COVID, being able to open Full Daye Hamburger Garden preschool, and not go above, and have a flat, flat budget, really says something about how fiscally responsible our district is, and recognizing that, yes, our funding has stepped up, but we, we also, you completely recognized how much of a sacrifice our taxpayers have, the burden that they have had on their backs, and, and so I just wanted to say, well done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Again, I'm going to copy off of that, Ms. Byrd, but one other aspect is, this is one of the first times in quite a while that I have seen every sector of the school district has a three-to-five-year plan. You know, before, we used to just plug money in wherever we could, where they said they needed money, but now they've all, like with our HVAC, you know, the, you know, rotation of that, and just every single aspect has really put in a plan for the next three to five years, and that's remarkable.
Thank you, Dr. Grucci, for leading that charge, she came in, and she's like, I need to wrap my head around it, what are you trying to do, what do you want to do? Give me your vision, the entire district, didn't matter what department you worked in, yeah. Yeah, very good, very good.
Mrs. Gilbert Ford is next.
So I just wanted to say that for the many nights that Miss Anaya sat through, all of our talk about education, student achievement, curriculum, and we were so excited about it, and you're like, okay, just tell me where to put the money. So this is, so the two hours that we put in is nothing in comparison to how many hours you sat through us talking about different things, and that you probably were like, what are they talking about? But I just want to say that I did enjoy the presentation, and you made a flame with the buckets, and.
If you.
Just that, I think that you kind of put the reality, even to the stakeholders, and even to, I'm sure, board members as well, is that a school district, yes, is children, yes, it's fun, it's learning and everything, but a school is also a business, and you can't, you know, can't be anywhere for free, and to manage the money and to make sure that we have everything that we need, I think is an amazing thing, and you do a great job.
Thank you.
I'm a little.
Overwhelmed a little bit?
A lot, but, no, 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 I'm just saying about the social studies.
Okay. It's coming, it's not that it's not happening, it's coming, we're going to do it with fidelity, that's.
I'm just saying about the social studies, because I think the children need to learn how to be good citizens and work, work together, but I guess I was going to ask the, not so much to ask the question, I guess I was, some of the things that stood out to me, the questions or comments, kind of, the security vestibules, and we talked about having the security officers, some schools have secretaries, some have security officers, is the plan to have a security officer, man each?
Correct, and they do the check-ins, nobody's in our buildings now due to COVID, and it was a good, not a good time, but when the vestibules were completed last spring, summer, fall, whenever they actually officially got done, we weren't open, so it's not, you know, it wasn't as detrimental, the conversations had with, some secretaries are bumped up, if you will, to a window, versus, now, if you go here, the secretaries are sitting back, and there's a chair there, so security rotates through, but to actually have somebody designated as, you're going to do the lobby guard, check on people when they come in, that sort of thing, have a more secure process.
I think that's.
And the secretaries are needed, by their, the principals need them.
Absolutely, and I was just going to say that, I think that's a great plan to have, since we have the security vestibules, vestibules, and then have armed guard or unarmed, but have security right there to be the frontline for that building versus a secretary.
Yep, we're trying.
You know, I think that's great.
Safety, security, we're trying to hit, that's one thing this budget really, I guess, really just tried to hit.
No, I think that's great, that was something I thought that I, that stuck out to me, and also, the STEM bus on wheels?
Yes.
I can't wait to see that.
That's exciting.
I think that's, I can definitely see that happen, I think that's one of, I think that's a great idea.
It's just resources needed to load up the bus, because a bus exists, the shell of the bus, we just have to.
And I'm just going to guess that, you know, once we get enrolled, we have to go into our schools, then we can, we can charge, not charge, excuse me, let me put that, let me take that back, we could lend our resources to other districts.
We have miscellaneous revenue.
Yeah, there you go, I was going to say, that's what I was thinking about, the STEM bus, and I like the way that Mr. Santilli put learning delay versus the learning loss with the children, and I will say this, my, my, one concern that I've always had is the learning, the student achievement gap, pre, pre-pandemic and post, because I believe that there was, there's been one before we had a pandemic, and I think that being in the pandemic has just highlighted it even more, and I just, and I know the district is moving toward that and working toward putting, you know, different programs and putting, allocating funds for that, but I just want to make sure that we keep that at the forefront of what we're doing in student achievement, and to close that achievement gap, because I feel like a lot of our students were struggling prior to the pandemic, during, and their will for struggle afterwards, and I will say this, what Mrs. Byrd mentioned about our, our ELA portion, I do believe that, you know, reading is the basis of everything, it's in our social studies programs, it's in our math, science, and if you don't, if the children don't have that, a strong reading background, they're going, they're going to struggle, and, you know, there are a lot of students who are not on a great level, and I just want to make sure that we just keep student achievement forefront of course, I know we do, eight gauge, embrace, engage, and educate, but we had work to do before the pandemic, but now we're going to have more, so that's just my, just have to say that, because that's what stuck out to me in the budget, to make sure that we put our resources into that.
Thank you.
Other board members, I see Miss Alvarada, and then Mr. Price.
First of all, I want to say, I think budget finance, that was like what brought me great anxiety, but I think between my school finance course and your excellent explanation, I actually totally followed along, and it kind of amazed me, so thank you. I liked the bucket idea, but it really made it clear. The things that I think we really need to take into consideration, I love the idea of having the extra nine teachers to do resource or help where needed, but we also have to make sure those teachers have enough training.
Training and resources.
And resources, that we need to make sure that we're making the difference for these kids, because, like I said, I know my kids have been really lucky, they have myself and my sister there, helping them along the way, but not all the kids are as lucky. The other thing I want to mention is with the grant, the other grant, if we get it, I know you're looking at the kids that were doing fine pre-COVID, and that started struggling during COVID, but let's not forget our kids that have been struggling before. I know plenty of kids who have gone through loss of parents and started struggling, and then COVID hit, but, so they were struggling before COVID, okay, and it's not one child, it's many children, and a lot of kids have been displaced, and that could have been before COVID, so I think we need to kind of, I understand the idea, but I think we need to maybe make it a little bit broader, because there's a lot of kids that need that social, emotional help, and, and we know that without having, if they, they don't feel like they belong here, if they don't feel like they're part of EHT, if they don't feel like there's a purpose for school, they're not going to learn, period, ever. And it's very touching to me, because, I mean, you guys know I run something at my own school on a voluntary, voluntary basis, but I know a lot of children in the EHT that really are struggling now, and people that aren't their parents are raising them, or their grandparents, guardians, and they're struggling. And some, like I said, a lot of these kids struggled pre-COVID, so I just think, maybe there has to be another way for us to, to get more of these kids, where if we don't, some of them are high, a lot of them are high school, too, so if we don't get a hold of these kids soon, they're going to go out in the world, and we don't know what they're going to do, and I think that just giving them that, the extra time and the extra support could make a huge difference for the rest of their lives.
Thank you.
Mr. Price is next.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to comment, I think it was very well laid out, Sandra.
Thank you.
This, this is my third budget that I had the privilege to work on, and this one seems to be the most easiest to understand, so I like the improvements that you made, and you can go right to what it is that you're looking for, and there it is, so I think we're off to a really good start with the budget.
Thank you.
And I know we're going to have more questions as.
Yep, as you scour the pages, yep.
And I know you really were helpful last year, I know I had questions, so.
Yeah, and just come with, come prepared for next meeting, this is your budget, this is our discussion, yeah, yep.
So I think we're off to a really good start.
Thank you.
And I appreciate all your hard work, and thanks, everybody, for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
Any other board members, questions or comments?
I know I already spoke, but I just had to add this, sometimes, when we had the auditor come, and he gave the audit of the district, and you hear about money that we saved, or here and there, and I do think that there is a myth that school districts have a lot of money, and they, you know, they hide money, and they have money in secret places, and I just have to, you know, I look at the budget, and this program that you use, I believe is the same one that, that my district uses.
CSI, shout out to computer solutions.
Yes, it's a very easy, it makes things a lot easier to understand, and I just, just wanted to say that, because sometimes people won't say that, or that people think that, you know, districts have money, and they're, you know, they're holding out, and I think people just need to know that a school district has to shuffle and keep money in certain buckets, and you can't, so, well, you have money in this bucket, in this bucket, why can't you use that? We can't, we're not allowed, there's red tape, blue tape, and I think you really made that clear tonight, so I just, I appreciate that.
And for the community, with your binder to the budget, through the process, or rather, through the process today, at the end of the day, you bring them back, you load them up next week, and we can have them in there.
Okay, anything else before we go to public comment?
Public comment, we'll leave us now.
So we're going to first go to the, our live studio audience for in-person question, if there's anyone.
Hello, Kathy Wazin, I have to say, as a.
Let's see if that microphone is on for you, Kat.
Hello, is that better?
Yes.
Okay. As a reading remedial teacher, I am ecstatic that you're adding nine teachers, I have taught remedial for many years, and we have never hired teachers. One of my pepe's was telling my supervisor every year, we need more, we need more, and just never getting them, so that's very exciting for me. As I overlook the. I, as I overlook the budget, I too feel that we've hit all the areas that we need to hit. Of course, we can't do everything in one year, but at least we are moving along and, and trying to address the concerns. I do look forward to the program about the delayed student. I agree with Mr. Santilli, that is delayed, not lost, nothing's lost, that can't be gained. And I think that with our staff and with the resources, we will be able to do a really good job with the children. And I really do positively think that once we are back after this pandemic and we're back full force, that we will see improvement in children. They just need to be back in, in our schools, and we all need to be functioning on a regular basis. So I thank you, I thank Ms. Sanaya for all her work and her team, and look forward to the process.
Thank you, Mrs. Wazin. Anyone else?
Thanks, Mr. Santilli. Liz Parlet Butcher, 327 Seapine Drive. Thank you so much, Sandra, wherever you are. I was, I was cracking up watching you walk without your heels on, because that was just me at every party. Slippers off, slippers and Uggs all the way. I just want to say thank you to everyone for tonight, but I also want to reiterate, and I'm sorry I couldn't contain myself, and I clapped out loud when I heard Mrs. Byrd's questioning, and that is because, as most of you are aware, I have a young one with dyslexia in this district. And I have had the opportunity, not as an educator, but as a parent and as a special ed advocate, to educate myself, because we can't advocate for our kids, right, if we don't know what they need. And I have been working with dyslexia specialists, I have been working with the Laurel School in Princeton, I've worked with many educators in this sphere. Listen to Mrs. Byrd, she is the teacher, she's the one in the classroom. I mean no disrespect to anybody on this board, listen to your teachers, okay? Listen to the ones that are teaching the reading instruction to these children. Fontis and Pennell and Lucy Calkins is not evidence-based literacy instruction. You can Google this for crying out loud, okay? It is not backed by science. Please, don't renew a curriculum that is not working to address the student achievement gaps for literacy instruction in the student population. And I've also emailed a set of questions over, I believe it was last Wednesday, and I'm sure you're still working on it, because there were nine of them, but of the nine questions, many of them dealt with dyslexia, as well as the current curriculum that this district is using for reading and ELI. So I look forward to receiving those responses soon. Thank you.
We thank you very much, Mrs. Butcher. Anyone else here in the room? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna go to our email questions first. Ms. Sanaya?
That's correct, thank you. So, this is unprecedented. Ms. Butcher just spoke, but I have an email as well, so I guess another three minutes, I'm not sure, Bell, do you okay?
I'm just gonna clarify, Mrs. Butcher, what we did was, the questions you had at the last meeting, we were gonna read during public comment this meeting, we don't have all the information yet, as you indicated, so would you like us to read them into the record, or are you sufficient knowing that we have them and we're gonna respond?
It's fine, you can respond when you get a chance, you don't have to read them out.
Okay.
Thank you.
No problem, so I will go to our second emailed question, or statement, public comment. Let me get it queued up one second, and get the timer started as well. I'll start. Okay, Andrea Pugliese, 28 Shoreline Road, Eck Harbor Township, parent of a sophomore in Eck Harbor Township High School and second grader in Slayball Elementary. Second time sending this letter. For clarification, the first one came on, oh, Friday before, and this was sent on a Monday, still public comment is today, Tuesday, so it was sent twice, but I'm reading what was sent, sorry. I want to start off saying thank you for proposing a plan to getting our kids back to school in March, I really hope this plan stays in place and doesn't change for the worse. With that, I have a few questions I hope you can answer. One, why can't the students go five days instead of four? What does the one day at home virtually do for students and staff? Are we having professional cleaning crew come in on Mondays and clean all the schools in EHT? Why is Monday chosen as our virtual day? Are the schools professionally cleaned on virtual day? Number two, Dr. Gruccio stated last night, the reason we were in half-days is due to lunch meals issues. She also stated because one of the schools, because one school, we can't move forward with lunches. However, all grades K-5 have lunch in the cafeteria. Middle school and the high school have grab and go, which the lunch staff is still making in the cafeteria, so why can't K-5 stay full-time? It's an extra hour and a half. To me, the students and staff aren't on a half-day schedule, when, for example, the high school is done at 12:30, but if we were on a regular day, that would be done at two. Also, on these half-days, with quotes, many students come home after being in person or after virtual day and log back on for small group instruction. Three, when the students return to school, can we try to make it like normal? I see other schools in New Jersey such as St. Joe's, Atlantic Christian, ACIT, and others doing fun activities with kids whenever it's inside or outside. If we all wear our masks properly standing next to one another, not staying on top of each other, shouldn't cause for any concern. Everyone who decides to send their kids back to in-person already weighed the pros and the cons. The kids need fun in school and need learning to be fun again. Four, when the survey is complete, will the responses slash percentages be posted for the public to see like other school districts allow? Will there be another survey except the one we chose, virtual versus in-person choice? I thought there was going to be a survey with who needed transportation. Five, I will also want to state, I applaud my second grade teacher, second graders teacher, and how great of a job she is doing. My high schooler also has several great teachers. Is he learning anything? Probably not. But he is passing, and it's because my husband and I are on top of him 24/7. His attendance isn't the best because some teachers mark him absent when his camera is off. I know the rules, but if we're in school and he didn't participate or just sat in silence, he wouldn't be marked absent, just lose points for participation. Can we help out with attendance? I don't want this affecting my child in the future. Six, there is six, seven, eight, nine, so.
I think we're out of, you know, we're out of time. What I, what I'm gonna suggest is, I think a lot of that has been covered, and perhaps we can, because it's, it's just so lengthy, let's respond to what we can via email, Dr. Gruccio. Yeah, I think a lot is recapped.
I'll take your direction on that, thank you.
Thank you, and I just want to state for the public at home, public comment email is closed at 4:00 PM on Monday to be read at the Tuesday meeting. If it's after 4:00 PM Monday or after the Tuesday, will be read at the following week. It is a general email, there's no corresponding back and forth. I did respond to this particular parent because she felt it wasn't being heard or responded to, so I did acknowledge to say, I received your email, it'll be read a public comment, we usually don't go back and forth, so she was appreciative of that. But just for those people at home to know, it will be addressed at the following meeting, not necessarily emailed directly back and forth. It's public comment, it's public comment. Thank you.
Do we have any, anything else via email?
That would be it, that will be all, Mr. Castillon.
Okay, and so we'll address that, the email, the best we can, and we'll go to the phones. Okay. We're all set?
It's been displayed, so we have, we've had time.
Okay.
Usually as soon as it's displayed, we hit, so I think it's safe to say, of course.
All right, so let me make a few suggestions then, as we wrap up. So first, I'll, I'll see if there is any further board member comment, and then we'll have a couple of housekeeping items. Mrs. Byrd.
Thank you. I wanted to clarify some of my comments before about the literacy programs that we have in the district.
If you can please use your microphone, I can't hear you from here.
It's on, it's on.
Closer, that's all, sorry.
Sorry, okay. I said, I wanted to clarify some of the comments I made regarding our literacy programs. I know that Lucy Calkins and Fontis and Pennell are programs that have been in use for a very long time, and the district are utilizing these resources because everyone has the same goal, literacy-rich environment and extending the reading capabilities of our, of our students. So the intentions are awesome. As a professional, I'm always trying to hone my craft, so my research for reading is secondary to my board, you know, being on the board. I did it for my own personal growth as an educator. Once I began researching Readers and Writers Workshop and Fontis and Pennell and other programs, what I saw, I can't unsee. So, yes, we did have multiple meetings about the programs, and I voiced my concerns then, and I felt much better after the meetings. However, my research continues, because I'm advancing my own practices. So, the programs we use, Lucy Calkins, Fontis and Pennell, there is research behind them, but the research is published by companies that are funded by Heinemann. It, it's all interconnected, so the, the studies that I've read and I've scoured, because I know there has to be, I'm, I'm missing something, because so many schools use these programs, but I haven't been able to find it. And the schools that these programs have worked for are schools that don't have the same demographics that we have here. So I have a ton of stuff right here, and I will make a copy for each board member to read through it, and if you don't see what I see in this research, I'm okay being wrong. But I can't not advocate for our K through three students who are not getting the foundation they need with the programs that we have. And it's not because of effort, it's not because teachers aren't doing their best, but the programs are not laid out to match how kids learn to read. You don't sit in a library and learn to read because there's books around you. You learn to read because it's a scientific process that's followed, and it's proven in science and studies across the world. Our programs don't follow that. And I'm, with everything that we've gone through in the last year, if not now, when? If we don't intervene in a way that doesn't just teach the top-tier kids how to read, because they're gonna learn how to read no matter what, but all the other kids, we need a program that reaches everyone, not just those kids who are gonna pick it up no matter. And I am very, very concerned, and I don't know how else to say it, and I'm not trying to throw anyone under the bus, or it's not a lack of effort, it's not a lack of effort, and it's not a lack of desire to have a literacy-rich community. But what we're doing, based on any of the numbers I've seen, I'm not so sure about these programs for this school district.
Mr. Castillon, can I respond?
Sure.
So, as, as we've talked about before, we'll be, we'll be happy to set up a, a meeting, and, you know, we want to continue to have conversation, because.
I turned it off, I'm sorry about that.
Is that better?
Yeah. All right, so we'll, we'll set up a meeting, and we want to continue to have conversation around this topic, of course. You know, we're always open to looking at research. I think, you know, for some of that research is that we have this conversation all the time, you're deep in research, I'd also argue that I'm deep in research too, with being a connected educator and seeing all kinds of different things that are working or not working, you know, not just here in New Jersey or in this county, but throughout the country. You know, there's, there's some things, you know, that, that you mentioned, and Lucy Calkins being one, this is not Lucy Calkins, Lucy Calkins is Columbia, you know, Heinemann. It, it, I understand, but there are, there are, but that's what I mean, research, you know, we have to kind of compare apples and apples, and, you know, there are things like LLI that are in what works Clearinghouse and different, you know, areas of research there as well. So, I want to collaborate, is what I'm getting at. I don't, I don't want this to become where you have research, we have research, and we want to collaborate and have conversation, and, and, you know, we're open to that. You know, so we'll set that up and, and we'll make that happen, okay?
I greatly appreciate that, and it is not about me or my research, it is just about, once you have something in front of you, you know, if I don't bring it up now, when?
No, I, I agree.
Right? So I'm on the school board for a reason, and that's to have, you know, sometimes you have to have the uncomfortable conversations, and this is the uncomfortable conversation. So, we've gone over it, and I appreciate that, you know, you're willing to speak with me, but I think it's important for all board members to hear this, because it should be sparking questions for everyone. If I'm up here, you know, continually bringing this up tonight, and I can't even speak about it eloquently, because that's how passionate I feel about it, there's a reason for that. And I'm not downing anyone's knowledge in any way, it's just, I didn't do this just to say, okay, 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 right? So, once I have something in my head, I have to bring it up, it's just who I am, and that's why I do this. So, so I guess we'll continue the dialogue.
Yeah, I mean, we, you know, the previous dialogue we had, I think you were in a place, and you continued to obviously do some more research, and, and so that's why we want to take a look at what you have to offer. You know, we, we're in EHT, and, and it's been my philosophy as an educator for 20 years now. I'm also a firm believer in, in, I've had programs, and I've had very successful programs, whether literacy-based or not, but I can tell you this, program or no program, it's all comes down to the people. It comes down to the person in the classroom and investing our efforts and energy into effective professional development with fidelity, hence why we talked a little bit, I'm glad you asked about young citizens, I, I just don't think it can be done with fidelity, you know, prime example. And that's what we really want to try to embrace, so.
And I just want to clarify, I am not talking about any particular program, I'm talking about the science behind reading instruction. So not a program, not a publisher, not anything. I'm talking about how our brains work to learn how to read, and how teachers tailor their instruction to meet that reading process. That's what I'm talking about, just to clarify.
Yeah.
But thank you.
That's right.
I see Mr. Ireland next.
Well, good evening, everyone. So, thank, thank you to Ms. Sanaya and the team for the budget presentation, I appreciate that. This is my very first budget that I'm participating in, so I definitely will have many more questions with you offline, Ms. Sanaya. with you offline, Ms. Anaya. So, a couple of follow-ups I have. So, Dr. Gruccio, I think it was mentioned in an email, but will the survey that was sent out, which was just sent out last week, and I know your staff is calling everybody as well for follow-ups, is that going to be publicized? And then my second one is, because I ask it every single week, what about middle school sports? Is there an update on middle school sports? And that is it.
Patrick, can you please repeat the first question? Was it, you wanted the survey data? Yes.
Yes, yes, Dr. Gruccio. I just wanted to, I think it was mentioned in an email, and it said that we're going to respond back to that email. I just wanted to see if it will be publicized on our district website, at least the results that come out in the next couple of weeks, because you guys are calling everybody back.
Yes, absolutely. We're working on that data each and every day, all hands on deck, because we did not get a good response to the survey. We, Sunday night, we lacked 3,000 responses. So over the last three days, or the last two days, and tomorrow included, we were making phone calls to the homes to get responses, so that's a lot of work. And before we can even move forward with the plan, we have to get those numbers, get that data. So yes, to answer questions in the end, we will be sharing that data. Middle school sports, we're getting closer, getting closer. We, you know, we support the idea that we want kids outside, you know, we want them involved, we want them running around. It's part of being healthy and fit, not only physically, but mentally and socially. We just don't have many teams to play, so we're trying to work out something that we can do internally. We have to check out some NJSIA rules regarding the high school, like, you know, maybe we can do some clinics, something like that, but we are getting closer. So as soon as we get an answer, hopefully, in my Sunday report, I can at least let the board know where we are with that. We are working with our athletic director, we're working with other schools, and let's see what we can piece together, okay?
Thank you so much for answering those questions. I appreciate it.
Any other board members? Anything else?
Yes, Mr. President, Lou Delavarka.
Go ahead, Lou.
Give me a second here, I'm going to try to get some of my thoughts together. I was very impressed with this evening's budget presentation. Having been on the board now for over 10 years, it was probably the best presentation I've observed, and I really want to thank Chandra and her team for putting that together. It is so easy, much more easy to understand the detail that's in there, and all of the different aspects of our community, how our representative, our school community, and our representative, really makes you feel good. Even though I don't have a binder in front of me yet, I'm sure I'm going to get one, though. I know what it's like to go through some of those binders in the past, and many people right after that mean, just put the binder aside and never looked at it again. I think this particular binder, we'll be able to use and do the kind of work that we need to do, come up with the questions, and make the right decisions for our districts. I'm very proud of the district and what our administrative team did tonight, presenting the budget. Regarding reading, let me see where I can go on that one. As a teacher of reading in sixth grade, fourth grade, third grade, and second grade in the past, and also as a principal in the district for over 30 years, who was on several committees where we did the kind of research to try to find the appropriate program for the kids, and I think we missed our mark a few times, but we tried, what we always did was include the teachers in the selection process. So when we had this discussion, and when we do our collaboration, we definitely need to include our members of our teaching staff, and, because I think they have a great deal of knowledge that they can share with all of us. In addition to that, I think Steve, and Mrs. Byrd, you made great points about how the child's brain works, and maybe we don't have, all of us don't have that kind of background, and maybe we need to have some training on that. And that's where I agree with Mr. Santilli, the professional development for the people who are in the classroom really needs to be intense and thorough and appropriate for the particular children that we have in our district, because we really have them for very special kids, and we need to meet, we need to meet their needs, and we know, based on everything we've been talking about tonight, that the needs are there. So, I just want to support the idea of collaborating and doing the research and getting the appropriate program for the district, and make sure we include our administrative team, of course, but our teachers, especially at the preschool through third-grade level, because they have that great knowledge there, and they know what they see every day, and I think we need to hear from them. So, thank you, and thank you. It's good to see everybody tonight. I hope to see you all in person someday soon. Thank you all.
Very good, Lou. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, so I want to just touch on two quick housekeeping items before we bring this to a close. So, you know, normally, we have our agenda questions would come in by 4:00 PM on a Monday. This, during this two-week budget, I guess, season, from numbers, you know, binders to our vote, which would be two weeks from tonight, I think it's going to be, you know, in everyone's best interest to go ahead and forward, you know, questions that you have on the budget right in, you know, to Ms. Anaya, whenever you have them, just like you would normally do, copy Dr. Gruccio and myself, and, you know, so they're, we're not going to just limit it to the Monday, you know, the once-a-week thing. Any budget-related questions, feel free, you know, because we want to get them all answered and, you know, have everyone have a comfort level. So then, the second thing I just want to suggest as a housekeeping, we are scheduled to, as was pointed out, we're scheduled to vote, to send this, to send our final budget that we agree on, on the 16th of March, which is two weeks from this evening. We have another meeting, the 23rd, on here, just sort of as a backup emergency meeting, and so what I'd like to propose that we do, at least tentatively, is, why don't we move that mini-retreat from March 18th to the 23rd at this point? That'll save us from having to be out two nights, one week. The 23rd is already on our calendars anyway, and it's still there. Should we need it for any budget purpose, we could still use it, but if we tentatively, well, let's go ahead and put it on the schedule if everyone's okay, we can take the 18th off, so we're not out two nights in one week, if everyone's okay with that. Everybody, everybody okay doing that? And of course, good, okay.
Mr. Castellano, just one quick question. The retreat was scheduled for 6:00. The 23rd was scheduled for 7:00. Should I advertise the time change?
Same, so yes, the 23rd would be same time, same place, 6:00 to 8:00.
At the high school versus here.
Hard stop, 8:00. Same as we had at the high school, but again, there are still several weeks. So if, for any reason, we needed that 23rd for another purpose, we could use it, but just to get ahead of the curve. Any final comments from administration before we...
I just have one update real quick. There was an issue with streaming for just a few moments, a few minutes ago, while Mr. Santilli was responding around that timeframe. There, this is being recorded, so anybody at home who missed it, you can then go back and watch the live or the replay for the moments that were missed. It was still recording actively, just not streaming, the shooting was interrupted for a few minutes there. And then, budget questions via email? Yes, please. The more time you give us to work on it, the better. For the public, there will not be business behind the scenes. It will be reported out, just like we do board member email questions, and what the solution was. Okay, thank you.
I just want to say thank you again to Chandra for all the work that she did preparing the budget. I want to thank the board for your time to listen, and I also want to emphasize, I appreciate that you recognize the three-to-five-year plans, that we are coming to the end of some of those three, most of those three-to-five-year plans, so we'll be looking to, looking ahead. But I also want to emphasize that during that time, a lot of work has been done regarding over the years with training and professional development in some of those areas and programs that we had, and it took three to five years to get where we are. So, I just wanted to plant that seed, to remember that whenever we look to new plans, that there's professional development involved in that. I think we all agree, we all support that professional development is needed, so. But thank you, and everybody have a great night and a great week.
Okay, so we're going to, before I ask for that motion again, I'm just going to thank our whole administration for doing a great job, because remember, folks, they are multitasking big time right now. They are, you heard the survey questions, right? So they're coordinating a road back, road forward, you know, getting survey data and figuring out how that's going to work, and at the same time, pulling a budget together, and that's a lot. That's a lot of work, and did a great job on the budget, and also doing a great job on our road forward. So, thanks again. Thank you, board members, for a good meeting, and I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Motion and second. Hands up, we're unanimous. Thank you all, and we will see you next Tuesday for our March work meeting.